Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 14th City Council Work Session Meeting. It's good to see everyone in a full house in here. We're going to turn it over to the City Manager. I know first on our agenda is the HRT Optimization Plan Update, and we are looking forward to it. I think before we get started with HRT, just I know we lost Mr. August Bullock, who was a big, a big fan of HRT, and I know we have the funeral on Thursday. But anything HRT-related, August would text me all the time about it. So sad that he's no longer with us, but I know HRT will continue on. So turn it over to you, Alan. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. The first item on tonight's agenda is the Hampton Roads Transit System Optimization Plan Update. The system optimization plan examines how HRT can best utilize its limited resources by reducing low ridership local bus service and reinvesting those savings into routes with high demand. Once implemented, the plan will provide more frequent and reliable service, improving connections across the region. So at this time, I would like to recognize William Harrell, HRT President and CEO, and turn the presentation over to Ray Amaruso, HRT Chief Planning and Development Officer. So Ray, it's all yours.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council.
Good evening.
Green, okay, now it's on. All right, I had to hit the button, sorry. Okay, so as the manager had just said, we're here to talk about our draft system optimization plan because this is a very important initiative the agency is working on now because we're looking how to place our limited resources translation bus operators to their best use by looking at our bus network system and looking for opportunities to reduce, optimize low ridership local bus service, and reinvest those resources into routes that need either more frequent service or just need drivers. So why is the SOP needed? Of course, first and foremost, we're always looking to increase ridership by putting service where it's most needed. We want to improve reliability. Our guarantee to our customers is that if we publish a schedule, we will be there when we say we will be there. And then reduce costs for our members jurisdictions. The context of why the SOP is needed is related to we don't have enough bus operators for the running the 68 bus routes that we have in our system. In the month of June as an example, for the entire month, we missed about 1,200 trips because of lack of bus operators. But we're also looking at how we can be more cost-effective partner in terms of funding the services. It doesn't do us any good to have routes that are running an hourly service and perhaps only carrying three passengers per hour. The context, and this is just a little bit underlying the SOP. The first one you can see here, we are challenged, like many people around the country, with a shortage of bus operators. It's a tough job, and the context is that we're chronically short. 50 operators to get back to pre-pandemic levels, and then to bring on the regional backbone system of high-frequency service, we need another 45 operators. So right sizing the bus network to match the bus operator resources is important. We won't leave anybody behind if a route is recommended for elimination because we have this demand-responsive service, otherwise known as microtransit, which is a new mode that can either fill the gap or complement fixed route service that doesn't use a large bus but rather use small passenger vans. To fully implement the RTS routes, there are 10 left to implement in the six cities that we've served, they will all have higher ridership than the local bus routes that are either operating 30 minutes or 60 minutes. Some service planning, how do you go about doing the system optimization plan? Some guidelines and principles. We're looking at optimizing service on low-performing routes, streamlining and consolidating routes that might be operating near each other, realigning some routes or modifying them to maintain fixed route coverage, and then making sure we adjust the service level types to match the changes in land use that are occurring in all six cities. We're a region that is not stagnant but is growing, and new populations are being added for residential or commercial business areas. Want to make sure that we're adjusting to that. I have three graphs that look the same here. The way the state measures performance and awards state funding to support operating costs, the more money you get from the state, the less that we have to come to the cities for. These graphs have similar appearance because I know no one typically lives by the route numbers. I've highlighted in orange the routes that Newport News either fully funds or participates with the city of Hampton in funding, so it's easy to see your performance. The first one is operating cost per passenger. The green are the 13 regional backbone routes, so of course you would expect them to have better performing characteristics. The blue, either dark or light blue, are the true local bus routes. We have certain benchmarks of performances on operating cost per passenger. The local average, we should at least be having $90.63 per passenger for operating costs. The regional backbones have a better passenger boarding, so it's lower. You could see to the far right, and there's one route that Newport News does fund, the 111, that we're well above the average. This is a candidate route that we're looking at along with some others. The state, it's very important, the state likes to see effective and efficient service. The second graph is how many passengers are you carrying per hour of service? Now remember, a lot of our routes run 60 minutes, so that's how many passengers you're carrying per trip because at 60-minute service, it's one trip per hour. And here's the exact opposite. The higher you are on the left, the better you're performing. You can see some of these regional backbone averages are upwards of 14 passengers per hour. And over on the right again, you could see the routes pretty much in alignment with the other one that are performing not so well, well above the local average of 6.84 passengers per hour of service. In some cases, maybe only three passengers per hour of service. Then the final measurement that the state uses to award state funding is how many passengers do you carry per mile of service? And again, like the other slide, the higher you are on the left, the better you are, and the lower you are on the right, the least amount, the most ineffective services we have. You could see the Newport News routes are kind of clustered in the middle. You do have that 111 that keeps showing up in the low end. So purpose and need recap, just HRT needs to match its published scheduled service to the existing resources that we have. I'd said we're missing about 40 trips per day because of the lack of operators. We must redirect those resources away from low-productivity routes to routes that do carry more passengers and serve more people. The SOP-impacted local routes cost about $6.43 more per passenger trip to operate than the regional backbone service. And right sizing the network will allow us to sustainably continue to provide public transit service in the future. A little bit about microtransit. We have proposed several zones within the city of Newport News. As you know now, one of those have been operating for a full year, and we just got awarded three more years of funding that the city has agreed to provide the local match for that zone. Microtransit as we see it, or demand-responsive service, can be leveraged to expand our footprint, our service footprint, without having to invest in a fixed route service. It can fill in the gap in territory that has no fixed, territory that has no fixed route service today, but it could also be used as a mitigative strategy if a route is recommended for elimination. Typically, the population employment densities are an indicator of where they would best work, and you could see some of them are concentrations of seniors or youth or people living in zero-car households, minority population, people below the federal level for poverty, or people with disabilities. These are folks that tend to like to use transit services of some type. This is the zone you have today that's being funded by the TRIP grant in which the state provides 80% of the funding, and you all are providing the 20% match. It's approximately 23 square miles. It's doing very well in its performance to date. It's taking a lot of people from the left-hand side or the westernmost portion of that zone to either Warwick or Jefferson or commercial retail activity very nearby, and connecting them to fixed route service that's oriented north and south. We have another zone that's proposed, what we call North Newport News, which is about 17 square miles, that as we look in partnership with your city staff about what we do to adjust the bus route network in Newport News can fill the gap as a mitigative strategy for some routes that are going to be recommended for eliminated, for elimination. And then one in Newsom Park, about nine square miles. Microtransit, if you don't know how it works, you make a reservation through your cellphone, you're directed to a virtual bus stop near your home, and within 15 minutes, a minivan or passenger van will pick you up. You might be sharing a ride with one or two other citizens to a common destination like a grocery store or to a nearby bus stop that you can then transfer to fixed route service. It's been very successful in the two pilots that we have in Newport News and Virginia Beach. What we're hoping to gain out of the SOP in terms of recommendation outcomes is as follows. From a customer perspective, increased regional backbone service, meaning 15-minute peak period service, over 300,000 more Hampton Roads residents will be within walking distance of a route operating at high frequency. Every 15 minutes, a bus will be coming by. The loss of service in the draft plan right now, less than 3% of all boardings and alightings on those routes that we're looking at for optimizing are represented. The positive impact, we will have lower wait times for almost all customers because so much of our service is hourly. If in 15 minutes, you're picked up by a minivan or the high-frequency service, that's a threefold increase in wait time in terms of lowering your wait time. And then finally, and most importantly, improve reliability. We won't be missing trips because we'll have a smaller network of bus routes to support that those operators can be used to provide all the other services where we are missing trips. So the guarantee to our customers will be in place that we will be there when we publish our schedule and on time. From an operational impact in terms of how HRT operates our service, it will definitely improve operator retention. I think operator burnout, you know, I get asked a lot of questions, well, why aren't you getting enough operators in? Actually, we are. What we're doing is we're burning them out quickly because of mandatory overtime because of not enough operators. So when you have a promise of either working four threes, four days on, three days off, or five twos, five days on, two days off, and then you come to the most junior operators, collective bargaining agreement, and say, you have to work on this day off because we have mandatory overtime requirements. You tend to burn them out after 12 to 18 months, and we lose them. So as fast as we bring them in, they're going out. So with this implementation of shrinking down the bus network system, we'll free up enough operators that we won't have to have mandatory overtime. It'll also help manage our operating costs. You free up local financial resources that can be reinvested into the microtransit by eliminating some of these underproductive routes. That's a translation of city resources. If you're providing that funding for a low-producing route, instead of supporting that fixed route service, take those financial resources and put them toward microtransit, and you will generate more ridership than you will in the fixed route service. And finally, and most importantly, it allows us to speed up the implementation of the remaining 10 RTS routes that are bringing 15-minute service frequencies. We can expeditiously implement those remaining 10 regional backbone routes. You know, to date, we have two in the peninsula, the 112 on Jefferson and the 114 on Mercury Boulevard, and the 20 on Virginia Beach Boulevard on the south side. There are 10 more to come, but we don't have the operators. This allows us to do that quickly. And then finally, from cost-control perspective and agency-generated revenues, the more ridership you have, and we've seen in the three 15-minute services, 40, anywhere from a 47% growth in ridership to 65% growth in the Route 112 since its implementation. The more ridership you generate, the more you increase your fare box return. We're at 6% to 7% fare box return right now. We'd like to get up to double digits. Again, every dollar you bring into the fare box is a dollar less the local cities have to put in. We'll examine the fare policy as well to support future decisions of how microtransit works with fixed route service. We're also looking at implementing mobile fare system payment with enabling fare capping. You can go to a supermarket, take a card to the register. You decide how much you want to load on. You can reload that card. That's being unrolled next year. You can have a cap if you invest so much in the transit pass after that. You can ride the rest of the time for free. And then we're also doing a sustainability study that's separate from this, that its main goal is to look at agency cost containment and look at opportunities to enhance revenues as another piece of the puzzle to contain operating costs. So schedule the next steps. This is really important. This is the fourth City Council briefing and a work session. Next week, I brief Hampton City Council, and the following week, we conclude with City Council of Norfolk. The public open houses are going to wait until those council briefings. It's been hard to get on everyone's calendars. So I have October here, it's actually going to occur later than that. We're working with your staff and the city of Hampton staff, who hired an independent consultant to look at our recommendations. They're coming up with some other suggestions, so we're refining. I called it SOP, Plan Refinements. We're working it out between now and November, and we want to make sure that everyone's on the same page in terms of the recommendations. We'll come back sometime in January to brief city councils again on where we land with the final plan and what that means, how many routes might be eliminated, and how quickly we can do some of the other things I talked about. The plan is to brief the HRT Commission in February on the draft plan, and hopefully in April, the commission can adopt the SOP. We'll do some implementation planning, because you can't do it all at once, in the May-June timeframe of next year. And the first opportunity to implement some of the recommendations would be in October 2026, followed by May 27, and if we need a third service board, October 27. And that's it. I wanted to respect the timeframe that was given, but I'm more than happy to answer questions.
Thanks, sir, we appreciate it. I know we have probably a lot of questions and comments. I want to give the floor to Councilman Harris. I know you serve on our, on the HRT, you represent city councils. I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, first, thank you. You took an hour-long presentation and condensed it into 15 minutes, which thank you for everything you shared. But one of the things that I think we all need to make sure we are understanding is that with the potential of eliminating those, some routes that have been recommended, the impact of adding the microtransit to our budget, or how much we will allot to the HRT based on adding those increased microtransit. So I hope that we soon or sometime before we move forward with anything, we're able to sit back down and fully look into the scope of what the impact of reducing those routes and adding the microtransit, because that could be...
Absolutely, Councilman, and that's why we're working with Lisa and her staff and the planning staff. Looking at where the plan is now, the resource, the financial resources you put in your annual budget to support the routes that you have. If those routes are eliminated, those financial resources will be shifted over to support microtransit, and you'll still benefit from state and federal operating assistance and fare box. So if everything works out right, and we will have more information later in November, it should be cost-neutral. The resources you're doing to support fixed route service that's not doing very well will be moved over to support the microtransit zones.
Right, yeah, that would be good for everybody to be able to see that as well because...
Yes, sir.
There's a lot more into it regarding the RTS and all the formulas that were shared with us during our meetings that the council would need to get their eyes on.
And I should mention, for everyone's benefit, the increase in frequency of 15-minute service is picked up by the general assembly money, the RTS money. The cities don't fund that. You continue to provide the underlying service for 30 and 60 minutes, but going to 15-minute service, which is a doubling of that service, is paid for by the 2020 general assembly money out of the RTS program. So there's no cost to the six municipal partners for that frequency.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to, for clarity, a great presentation, by the way, and it's really good to see that we're looking at trying to, particularly because we're such a long city, to actually be able to minimize the times for some of these people to be able to catch the bus and the transit. But, so, help me understand, so if, for instance, the North Newport News microtransit zones, so if that's implemented, then say for instance if a bus used to go up and down Jefferson Avenue, that means they won't go in this area?
That's a great question, and I really went faster demand-responsive service. So no service, the 112 will continue on Jefferson Avenue. I know you're just using it as an example. Consider this as an overlay for, there are other routes that penetrate that zone that come east-west. Couple of them are being recommended for elimination, and we're still working through your city staff on that. But the intention is to fill the gap. These zones are defined so that you get somebody to a fixed route service like the 112 on Jefferson. So it's an overlay on top of what remains. So Route 107 on Warwick Boulevard, so if the route, one of the recommendations we have is a Route 106 would be eliminated. It's duplicative because they both pretty much operate the same path. But this zone will feed people into the 107. So it's just an overlay with 15-minute service, which is a big benefit because right now you're operating at hourly service.
Okay, thank you so much.
Just a real quick question, and it's on the same line with microtransit. Are y'all seeing more people riding microtransit to get to a bus route or going to another destination?
Okay, in the Newport News zone, it looks like more people are using it to go to, the two big retail carters on Warwick and Jefferson. Yes, they're using it to connect a transit service, but in this pilot test of the original zone, let me go back there, they're staying pretty much within the zone or going to shopping opportunity. The Virginia Beach pilot is different. They're using it to connect to the Route 20 on Virginia Beach Boulevard. They're using it to go to the end of line of light rail. So inside the zone is the ideal situation. Otherwise, we provide you a connection to a route that leaves the zone to fix routes. So in your case, they're staying inside the zone and shopping or doing something like that. Every, every zone will have different characteristics.
So could, can you bypass a bus route to go to your destination? Or do you have to go to that bus route if your destination is just...
We're not supposed to leave the zone. We use contracted company, we don't operate it. You're not supposed to leave the zone. You stay within that physical footprint that you see in purple. And if you have a destination outside of that purple area, we'll bring you to a bus stop nearby, and that bus will get you there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, and just for clarity for me, it's kind of piggybacking what Councilman Wong just said. So the microtransit is, I would assume, is a more affordable option than other ride-sharing opportunities, correct? If you're going to be sharing that vehicle with other riders? And then, and then part two is, does that, how does that impact your overall fare? If you're, if you're picking up microtransit, then going to a bus stop and getting on a bus, how does that...
Great question, because it came up at another city council presentation. We'll have to look at our fare policy to change it. Because even if there's only three people using a fixed route service once an hour, you have a one-seat ride with one fare. Now you're telling me I have to take a microtransit and then I have to cut... So our fare policy will, we'll have to modify it to allow the free transfer. So it's only a $2 fare. It'll be the same as a bus, it's a $2 fare with a free transfer if you, if you have to leave the zone, because that came up before. What was the other part of the question, Councilman?
Just that, you know, and so the, the first part was if they were just using microtransit to go to a location, not to a bus, I'm assuming that that fare would be more affordable than an Uber or Lyft.
Yes, because it's going to be $2 the same as our bus fare. Now, from a performance characteristics with the two zones that we have running for a year, these pilot zones, right now, the cost for an hour of fixed route service for a bus route, system-wide, is $126 per hour. The cost right now from the pilot, it's averaging about $72 per hour. So it's almost half, you know, it's not, it's a little bit more than half, but it's certainly more cost-effective. You can carry those three people more effectively on a micro, on a smaller minivan than the fixed route service. So think about this. You have a route, and on the south side, we actually have this example about to give, that operates 12 hours a day, once an hour, two directions. That route is only carrying about three people per hour. So three times 12 in two directions for the entire day of $126 an hour, you're carrying 96, if I did my math right, 96 people for that entire day. It's very ineffective. You can do it so much more effectively with microtransit. And then score better in the ranking system of the state when they award funding because the state wants to see more people, cheaper cost per hour, cheaper cost per mile, and you get more money.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think we're good, thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, always a pleasure, thank you.
Always. And I know next up, we have the Newport News Office of Public Defender. I'll say, I'll give a quick story. I think about two years ago, I hopped on a Z... I think about two years ago, I hopped on a Zoom call, and there was four public defenders, and we talked a lot about how we didn't have parity when it came to salary with public defenders. So I think we did a pretty good job this last budget cycle with that office, but I'm glad they were able to come and talk about what they do. So I'll turn it over to Alan.
I'll provide a further embellishment, if I may, of the mayor's introductory comments. So the second item on tonight's agenda is the Newport News Office of the Public Defender. The Office of the Public Defender offers legal representation to individuals charged with criminal offenses in Newport News, whether under city or state law. Chief Public Defender Beau Webb and senior management team members are present to introduce their office, explain their role within the criminal justice system, and discuss opportunities to work with the city on initiatives aimed at reducing recidivism and improving public safety. Thank you very much. Beau?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Beau Webb. I'm the chief public defender for the Newport News Public Defender's Office. I've held that position for almost the last 20 years, which is almost as long as the Office of the Public Defender in Newport News has been here. That office was established in 2005. I have a very dedicated and committed staff that do the work that we do, representing the citizens of Newport News, who are charged with criminal offenses, who are unable to financially afford legal representation. It's a rewarding job, but it's a really, really hard job, and it takes a lot of dedicated professionals to make it work. And I have a staff that is dedicated and committed to making it work. My office is part of an independent state agency. We are state salaried. We're on the state retirement system. We have state benefits. But for the first time this fiscal year, the City of Newport News has approved, City Council has approved income supplements for my office, and I just want City Council, City Manager, Mayor, to know how appreciative my staff is for that. It is the city recognizing the dedication and hard work of my staff, and I just, it was really my job tonight to let you know how much they all appreciate that and how much of a morale boost that was for my office. And I don't think coincidentally that since City Council approved those, we have been able to bring on three additional attorneys, and we are so close to being fully staffed for the first time since the pandemic, in the middle of pandemic. So it's been a while, and we are so close. And again, I just want City Council to know how much my office appreciates that. And so I'll turn it over to Jessica Crossitt to tell you a little bit about what we do.
Hi, I'm Jess Crossitt. I am the chief deputy public defender in our office here. And as Beau was saying, you know, first of all, what is the Public Defender's Office? So as Beau was saying, there's the state agency, it's an independent state agency called the Virginia Indigent Defense Commission. They are responsible for the establishment and the oversight of all public defender offices in the state, but they're also responsible for the oversight and credentialing and training of court-appointed attorneys in general. So attorneys who are not with the Public Defender's Office but do court-appointed work. There are 31 public defender offices throughout the state. Seven of them are here in the Hampton Roads area. And we have, just to tell you kind of what our office looks like, we have 20 attorneys. If fully staffed, we are at 19 right now, which is great, but we have 20 attorney positions that are given to us by the state agency. We don't get to say, oh, we need more attorneys, so we can just go out and hire more. We also have 10 staff members. Our staff members are legal assistants. We have one who is called an actual paralegal, legal assistants and office manager. We have two investigators who help us investigate cases. And we have two positions that are somewhat unique. We have a mitigation specialist, and we now have a peer navigator. Mitigation specialist is someone who works to connect our clients to programs, whether it is a program that is going to help them deal with substance abuse or mental health disorders, really tries to get them from the jail to a program that is actually going to address their underlying needs. She is not an attorney. She is our office social worker. The peer navigator is actually a brand-new position, and it is not a state position. It is through a partnership that the Indigent Defense Commission established with a branch of AmeriCorps called Recovery Corps. And so the peer navigator is someone who, they themselves have experienced, gone through recovery, and they are now working to help their peers. So they are a friend. They are someone there who can go to someone who is really dealing with a substance use disorder, primarily opioids, because this is connected to some of the opioid abatement funding. And this person can go into the jails, meet with clients in the office, however it is, just really as a friend to guide them. They don't push anything on them. They're here if we want to talk, if you want help. And our attorneys, you know, I have talked to the clerk's offices, there aren't really statistics on this, but it is very easy to say that our attorneys represent the majority of people who are charged in Newport News with violating a criminal law, whether it is a city code violation or it is a Virginia state code violation. So what do public defenders do? Public defenders represent indigent people, adults and also children. So when someone is charged with anything, a traffic violation, up to something serious, robbery, they end up in court. They have a first appearance. Anyone who is charged with a crime that could possibly lead to their incarceration has the right to be represented by an attorney. So they go before a judge who basically goes through this questioning with them. What do you want to do about a lawyer? People have absolutely the right to represent themselves if they want to go that route. People have the right to go out and retain an attorney of their choosing. The third option, which is what most people ask for, is for the court to appoint an attorney to represent them. So they fill out a financial qualification screening tool, because you have to be found to be indigent, to, in accordance with Virginia law, be represented by a court-appointed attorney. So then the law says, okay, if this person qualifies for court-appointed counsel, the law says that first, the judge has to appoint the Office of the Public Defender, if there is one in that jurisdiction, unless there is some sort of conflict of interest. So unless we have a conflict of interest, we are getting appointed to represent every indigent person who is facing jail time and asks for a court-appointed lawyer. So we represent clients from the moment we are appointed by that judge until their case is closed, even if their case goes to the Court of Appeals of Virginia, it goes to the Supreme Court of Virginia. We represent them all the way through that process. So usually, the first thing that we're doing is we're trying to, if people are in jail, secure their release. We are trying to make sure that people do not lose housing, jobs, family. We are trying to make sure that children, because we do have clients who are children, that if they are over at the detention center, can they go home? Is there a safe placement for them? So we work, at least, that is our kind of main focus at the beginning, is is this person in some way incarcerated, and can we change that? As we go further down the road, we are working through their case with them. We represent them at preliminary hearings. We represent them at trials. We represent them at sentencing hearings. We work out, we engage in plea negotiations with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. And as part of all of that process, we are involved with our clients, trying to figure out, you know, what is going on here? And is there a way that we can work with them to kind of get at the underlying problem? Many, many, many of our clients are affected by substance use disorder, by mental health disorders, poverty, the list goes on and on. And so a big part of our job is trying to, first of all, if we can't have somebody's charges totally dismissed, what is the next best alternative? How do we get them through this? If they're going to become a convicted felon inevitably, how do we make that have as few consequences as possible? If there's no way we're going to get around jail time, how do we mitigate that? How do we minimize that? And of course, finding alternatives to jail whenever possible. So I am going to turn it over to Andrew, who is going to talk to you guys about some ways that we could potentially partner with the city.
Thank you so much, and I want to echo the gratitude that we feel for the council finally getting some recognition and proving something that we all know to be true, which is we are partners with this city. I have viewed myself as a city employee as much as a state employee. We care deeply about the citizens of Newport News, and not just when they are charged with a crime, but after they get out of jail and after they become productive citizens in the community. One thing that is unfortunate is that the first time we meet our clients is after they've been arrested and they're inside a jail cell. And it's even more unfortunate when it's a young person, and the first exposure they have to criminal justice is getting arrested. And indeed, that's often the time they actually learn about the criminal justice system, including their rights. What are actually your rights? How should you approach a police encounter? Some of the initiatives that we've already taken part in involve collaboration with the prosecutor's office, with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, and indeed, I think some of the best parts of criminal justice come through collaboration. If you've ever been present at a graduation ceremony for the Recovery Court or the Behavioral Health Docket, you've seen that's true. That's not the typical adversarial process at work. That's a group of people getting together to problem-solve and to find what we can do for these individuals. One of the things that we do already is we partner with something called the STARS Program, and this is an initiative to meet with some high school students, to take them through a mock trial, and to expose them to different actors in the criminal justice system in a non-threatening environment. And it's fantastic. It's working very well. But unfortunately, the reach is quite small. So right now, we work exclusively with an Achievable Dream High School, and we can take at most about 16 students. And for those 16 students, it's a magical experience. We are inspired by the students. But a thought we've been kicking around for a long time is to take this show on the road and to give a presentation at other high schools. And we think that there's a great opportunity for public defenders to partner with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office and even the police to present an interactive panel for some of the other high schools. Reaching more young people is really our goal, and the goal is to demystify this scary criminal justice system. There's an inherent distrust from young people for every actor in the system. That includes the police, that includes the prosecutors, the judges, and us. Our own clients don't necessarily trust us. They view us as a part of this system. If we have an earlier opportunity to engage with students, to do a question-and-answer panel, to talk about how should I approach an interaction with the police? What are my rights in that situation? How can I avoid escalating a situation into something that it doesn't need to be? I think this is a great opportunity. Now that you have recognized our relationship with the city, we want to give back. And so what I would propose is that we partner and we go to high schools, perhaps we start small, a pilot program, one or two high schools, and we give students the opportunity to interact with these different actors. And this is not my idea. Sheriff Morgan actually did this back in 2017, I believe. We actually had a forum. It was only at one high school, but it was tremendous. The students were engaged, they asked questions, and we all felt that they left with a little bit more information about criminal justice. And why not do that on a regular basis? And so we are willing volunteers to start this initiative. I know Shannon Jones probably has a lot on her plate right now, but once she settles in, we know they would be willing to partner with us. And so what we would ask from the city is just contact information, how we can partner with the schools, what schools might be the most appropriate to try this pilot initiative. And certainly, we'd have to work with Chief Drew, and I have no doubt the Police Department would be interested in partnering with us on this endeavor. But that's just one of the ideas we have for community outreach, and I see Shannon Jones in the back there, who has done some wonderful work with STARS, and we believe this collaboration can be largely successful. But thank you so much again. This recognition means the world to us. We're grateful to be a part of this community.
Thank you so much. I know there's probably some questions. I want to turn it over to Councilman Coleman. I know he leads our public safety work from a council perspective, but also with your background, just being a deputy sheriff, probably have a lot to say, so turn it over to you, sir.
I just want to say thank you so much. Great presentation. I know we spoke very quickly before our work session started. A lot of people don't know what the Public Defender does. And I can tell you, I've seen the transformation of our Public Defender system, what it was like in the '90s to where it is today, and it is complete 180. So thank you for everything that you do. And as the chair of the Public Safety Committee, of course, we have already spoken that we want you to be part of our committee. There's a lot of connections, as you were talking about, Andrew, with partnerships with the city. Everybody's at the table there. Schools is there. So we're going to be able to sit down and talk about how we can expand your reach in the community and what that looks like, because I just think the more connections we make with our young people in particular, the better our community is going to be. But thank you so much for everything that you guys are doing.
Counsel, anything else? I'll just say, just thank you once again. Thanks for reaching out, I think, almost two years ago and saying, we had no idea that, not that you were underpaid, but that we didn't do a supplement. So as they say, close mouths don't get fed. I think the budget and Alan and everyone did a good job, I think, making sure you have the parity, and so just let us know how we can help support. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
I think next up, we have comments, ideas, suggestions. I think Councilman Ely wanted to go first and talk about the special events recognition. Is that correct?
Yes.
Awesome.
He's got a whole thing. Yeah.
Can I have Shelley come up here, please? And Marquis?
Oh, yeah, it's a presentation, yeah.
So first, I would like to say thank you to Curtis and Philip, which are amazing ideas of council committees, because I love my committee. I'm like headstrong guy, talk to Gigi all the time, talk to Steph all the time, we work really close together to do great things for the city. Early in the year, Shelley reached out to me, said about, is a conference that the city goes to every year and get awards, and the conference is based on special events, festivals, and parks recreation. So of course, me, like, no, I do not want to go. Even up to the day before, I'm like, gee, cancel that trip. I don't want to go to this conference. But I'm so glad I went. I learned so much and got to see firsthand the recognition and the respect that Newport News have, not just around the United States, but this conference is with people across the whole world. When I was meeting the producer... When I was meeting the producer who does Coachella Festival, I said, okay, I'm at a real conference. So, it felt good to learn so much, to talk to different people, and to see the level of respect that it was at the IFEA conference. Was founded in 1956, and it was a festival that's a very diverse committee festival. It's with people of all nationalities. I didn't know this until I got to the award, that Newport News won nine gold, five silver, and eight bronze awards.
That's probably a round of applause.
I'll let you talk about the gigs side.
I would like just to make a comment about that round of applause that you just gave to me. Really, it belongs to almost every single person in this room. Our award-winning events require a big lift and a lot of coordination and a lot of support. And almost every single department head and staff member in this room has in some way supported us. And so, the recognition goes to every single person in this room and probably, I don't know, maybe 75% of the staff that work in the city that support all of the good things that we do. So, thank you.
About the 2025 IFEA Pinnacle Awards announcement, the City of Newport News Parks Recreation Department earned seven awards at the 2025 International Festivals and Events Association. House Wickerson Assurance Pinnacle Awards recognizing excellence in festivals and event planning, marketing, community engagement worldwide. Through creative programming and thoughtful planning, Parks Recreation continues to strengthen and unite Newport News. This is my favorite part of the awards. I'm so competitive. I'm like, Shelley, if we don't win the most awards, we need to find somebody else. So, these are the results from the Hampton Roads area. Newport News, we won seven. Norfolk, five. York County, four. Virginia Beach, three. So, it felt good to be leading in this effort. Like I said, I'm very competitive. And we walk away as the winner for the Hampton Roads area awards. This was one of the statements for the president. You can read it, Shelley.
So, this is probably one of the most impressive and kindest statements we've ever received. This quote almost brought tears to our eyes, but it's condensed here. But Steve Schmader is the IFEA World President and CEO, and he took the time to write this quote and share that with us. And we've included it on some of the handouts here tonight and also in the press release that's going to be going out tomorrow. So, do I need to read it? I think you guys probably all already read it. So, again, just so appreciative of the recognition. And it's always sweeter when it comes from the outside. I don't know if that's, if you all will agree, but at that level, at that international and global level, to be recognized the way we are, it's amazing. I want to recognize an individual who's in this room, who is one of the most humble people that I've ever worked with, but an award-winning individual. His name is Marquise Johnson. He is sitting in the back row. He is our marketing coordinator and manages to turn all of our crazy event ideas and messages into award-winning graphics and promotions. And that gives us an extra platform to share all of our successes and also, you know, moving forward, building sponsorship programs and even more innovative events to come in the future, so.
Sorry, catch up in there. I just say, I think there's a lot more to come. And so, I think we've done a really great job as a team, and I'm looking forward to everyone taking it to the next level for next year.
And I want to say, Marquise is very loyal. A neighboring district tried to steal him under my eyes and offer him more pay. And I said, if you take entertainment, you're going to have to fly your own flight back home. But he said he would never leave Newport News, but just to see other districts in a 757 trying to steal our people, I was like, how could they? But once again, I just wanted to bring that report back to city council. Thank y'all a lot for going to that conference. It was really good. We learned a lot, made a lot of great connections, met a lot of great people, and is ready to continue to bring positive energy and positive things back to Newport News.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
So, speaking of looking forward, next year, we will be applying for the World Festival and Event City Award. Not many people achieve that designation, but we have set ourselves up on a platform for success. And it looks overall, it takes a comprehensive look at the city's infrastructure and environment for hosting festivals and events, and the diversity and success of the city's current festivals and events. So, fingers crossed. It takes about a year to submit the application, but I do feel like we have a really good chance. And like John said, we're super competitive, so if we don't win, we probably won't come back.
And the last thing I would like to say about our events department, most of the different cities and people from other different countries, at this awards ceremony, they have like department of like 15 to 20 people. Our department is only really like two or three, maybe four. So, I was just overwhelmed to see that the magnitude, what we're doing with the number that we have to other neighboring cities and other people with much larger staff to pull off the events we do. So, that shows that Newport News is, we rock and roll. And so, once again, thank you, Curtis and Philip, for y'all amazing idea for council committees, because I love my committee. That's all, folks.
Thanks, John. We'll just go ahead and start to the right of me and do comments, any suggestions. Councilman Harris?
Real quick, I know last week, there was a memo shared about the impact of the shutdown. And that's one, I know you said it will come back to us, because now we're a little longer from the day it initiated, and how that's going to be impacting us moving forward. Questions and inquiries that I'm receiving, how it's going to impact some of our families.
I can speak to that. We've been in touch with Congressman Scott and that office. We're going to publish more, I think, information this week. I think we thought it was going to be over this week. It is not. And so, I know there's been, I think I even saw it on Councilman Ely's page, but the snap in the wick being shut off depending on it. So, I think we'll have more clarity in today or tomorrow. You want to add anything, Allen, to that? I know there's some food stuff that could shut off here pretty soon.
Yes, and I'll have, I'll have an updated, I'm going to continue to provide you with updated information until we get through the shutdown. I'm not sure when we can actually expect closure, but I suspect, like most of you, this is going to continue for some period of time. And I think it will not only bring a sense of urgency to Newport News, but there will be many municipalities across the country that will experience the repercussions of the shuttering of federal dollars and the flow of state dollars to their communities. And so, this is going, if it is prolonged, this will bring a significant measure of challenge and quite honestly, some pain in trying to work through it. Your administration has some ideas that we are kind of developing as contingency plans, but they won't be contingency plans for long, because the magnitude of the funding is just that great. But we are thinking of some short-term strategies that the council could employ to try to, you know, minimize impact as long as possible. So, you'll hear much more, and I plan on including an update in your package on Friday.
Councilman Coleman?
I don't have it.
Councilman Vic?
I don't have it.
John, you got anything extra?
Yes. So, real quick, this is one of the first items that has origins from our Finance and Government Committee that is coming before us during the next council meeting, well, this council meeting. If you looked at your agenda, you would have saw on there the vehicle license fee. And so, what I want to do right now is just provide a quick, high-level key changes in which more formally I'll speak to during the meeting. But first, we're recommending a change to the due date for the VLF. Also, the VLF fee appears on the personal property tax bill, and it is currently due on December 5th of each year. The change we propose is to move the due date to June 5th. This adjustment aligns the billing to the actual calendar year. The fee covers, which is January through December. Changing it to June 5th eliminates the confusion caused by billing vehicle owners in advance of the assessment year for which it applies. And so, in addition to that, I want to thank our treasurer, Mr. Marty Eubank, who is in the back, for bringing this to our attention. We think this is going to be an efficiency win for our residents. And like I said, I could speak more to it during the council meeting, but if anyone had any questions now, we can address them now before that meeting.
I think we're good, Vice.
All right.
Anything else?
That is, that's it.
Okay. I don't have anything on my end, so can we take us into closed session?
I move pursuant to Section 2.2, Tag 3711.8A of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended subsection 6, that council hold a closed meeting for purpose of discussion, consideration, and involvement of public funds where a competition or bargaining is involved, where, if made public initially, the financial interest of the government unit will be adversely affected, subject to which is the potential investment of public funds in support of a public festival. Call her up.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Motion carried 7-0.
Thank you all.[1302.71]
All right, I move the members of council certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters are lawfully exempted from open media requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion but which closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, and considered in the closed meeting by the council.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carried seven zero.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.